Recall the order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, 7:00 PM in the Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom in the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chattanooga, Virginia. Roll call.
Give us just one second, we're still waiting for some connections.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We saw seven o'clock and we got ready to go.
It ain't me, I'm working.
I don't.
No, I didn't jinx you. You don't have one? I was working.
Barber, should we get it? The barber?
Nope. Don't say hi. Actually, it is me.
Now, you're online there.
Did he come on camera?
This is online.
Which one?
I should be online.
Yeah.
Josh, check, make sure he's on 2.4.
Where's the router at?
He's on 2.4.
Mm-hmm, he's good there.
Where's the wireless system? Maybe we gotta get closer.
It's right here. Mr. Warren.
Router gotta reach out.
We gotta make these rejections work, don't you?
Right meeting. One meeting. Same place. Right meeting.
There we go.
We supposed to be on 5?
4.
Okay, so.
Still don't see him?
I know, I disconnected him. Nobody does. I got you.
Mine shows live.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah, it separates itself. You're live, you're live.
She says she still doesn't see you.
I have Mr. Scars.
You are live. No barber?
This may just hurt.
Technology is a wonderful thing when it works right. We're learning patience.
I'm trying to believe in it, but I've already done three meetings in a row.
Hard close is that. That's what it is. Mr. Scars.
Because he walked across the room.
How about now?
You see him there? All right, we got him. All right, roll call, Mr. McLester.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scars.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. All right, I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with me, please. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're down to item four. Item five are the items to be added to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add item 14A, approved real estate representation agreement between county and Marcus and Millchamp Real Estate Investment Services of North Carolina Incorporated. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Call for vote.
Give me one second, I will type this motion in.
Okay. Mr. Scars, I mean, Mr. Blackstock, can you be the mover?
I've already moved it.
Thank you. Motion again made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get approval of the agenda?
So. Uh-oh. Second. Mr. Davis.
All right, any discussion on the approval of the agenda? Please vote. Waiting on one vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Vote carries unanimously. We're down to consent agenda. Get a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception, I would like to remove the item G, the EMS transport and EMS backup transport memorandum of agreement, extension and contract from the agenda itself. Place it on the main agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we're gonna make it 14B, Mr. Blackstock?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Davis, any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to presentations, and I don't think we have any, do we, Mr. Sides?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're down to hearing of citizens. Each citizen addressing the board under hearing of citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall be limited, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual members thereof. Hearing the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. And we have no one that signed up to speak tonight for hearing of the citizens. So, we'll move to public hearing, rezoning hearings, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Code Zoning Ordinance. Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R-18-014, William and Anita Emerson, a petition to rezone 1.231 acres located on State Road 839, Waller Lane, in the Chatham Blair's election district, from A1 agricultural district to R1 residential suburban subdivision district, to combine with an adjacent parcel of land already zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, then all use is listed under Section 35-222 are permitted use. The planning commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Emerson is here to represent the petition.
I will open the public hearing at 7:11, and Mr. Emerson, would you like to speak?
Well, I think I'm good at everything. I'll trace up and plan for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Emerson. No one signed up, so I close the public hearing at 7:12. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for case R-18-014, that the property be rezoned from currently A1 to R1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? I will say, this is in my district, so thank you, Mr. Farmer, for making the motion. I've been to the property, I've talked to Mr. Emerson, you know, it's gonna be value-added to our community, so I certainly will be supporting. So, thank you, Mr. Emerson. Okay, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Your property has been rezoned, Mr. Emerson.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're down to other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall be, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. First public hearing is Gretna Ballfield lease, Mr. Hicks.
Good evening. We've had, I think, a couple of conversations and a presentation to the board for the Gospel Tabernacle Outreach Center has expressed an interest in leasing the old Gretna Ballfield. You have a copy of the proposed lease, it's basically a one-year lease that can be extended for eight additional terms. They would have to, you know, showed that they have proof of insurance coverage, and if they make any improvements on the property during the terms of the lease in the future, if they decide to buy that property, that would be subtracted from the purchase price. And I think we have some representatives from the church here this evening, and if you have any questions, I will answer those for you.
I'll open the public hearing at 7:14, and we had one individual sign up, Reverend Stone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I've said a lot during this presentation in the last few months, so I'm just hoping that everything that has been said has convinced you guys that, you know, what we are trying to do is going to improve our community as a whole and also that area of town. We've worked very hard to accomplish what we've accomplished so far, and, but still the sky's the limit, and we think there's still a lot gonna be done. Since that time, we've also worked and landed a deal there with Adopt a Highway, and we have adopted the highway in that entire area. So, now we take the responsibility for keeping that clean. They, I think they just put our signs up last week, so hopefully we can get this done and no problems, but if anybody have any questions for me, that's what I'm here for.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Reverend Stone. Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:16. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Farmer.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize our county administrator to execute the lease between the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors and the Gospel Tabernacle Outreach Center for 7.55 acres identified as parcel number 2530-37-4789.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Reverend Stone, I'd just like to thank you and your congregation for taking on this endeavor and working to improve our community and giving an outreach to our young folks. Appreciate it very much. All right, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any, Mr. Sides?
We have the unfinished business.
Okay, we're down to item 12, new business, award of bids of Train Depot Parking Lot paving project, Mr. Hicks.
Tom, we brought this project to you several months ago when you awarded a bid, and it took VDOT so long to get their authorization that the low bidder came back and asked for additional funds because of the increase in asphalt costs and petroleum costs. So, we sent that back to VDOT, and they said, no, we're not going to approve any additional costs. So, we rebid the project, and our apparent low bidder is Cruise Construction Company in the amount of $42,910. This is all federal funds, and yesterday we already have VDOT's concurrence, so, you know, Tom, this project's finally ready to move forward. Now, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Hicks? What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve awarding the pavement contract as presented in a board package in the amount of $42,910 to Cruise Construction Company Incorporated, subject to final approval by VDOT.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion is approved unanimously. We're down to 12B, health insurance cost increase, Ms. Vanderhyde.
The proposal before you, we discussed at length at the work session concerning our health insurance cost increase for FY '19 year, and staff is recommending that you all choose option two, and option two would be, based on our current subscribers of 310, would cost an additional $160,000 more than what we currently have budgeted for a total cost of $260,000, and this would increase your contribution so that employees only have to pay an additional cost of 12.1%, regardless of the plan that they choose, whether it be employee-only, employee-one-child, employee-spouse, or family coverage, and we do have three different plans to choose from. And that reflects a 12.1% cost increase in premiums. So, just to remind the board that if you do go with option two, this is a recurring cost that we would have to consider for future budgets, so in the upcoming 2020 budget, we would not only budget for the $100,000, but this whole total of 260. So, I'm here if you have any questions concerning this increase, or, and this would mean that the county would be remaining with our current provider of Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Any questions? Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve this plan as presented by county finance director.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. Davis.
Yo, I'm hitting the button, but it's not doing anything. I'm gonna blow on it.
There you go. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. We're down to 12C, 2018 year-end budget amendments. Ms. Vanderhyde.
Yes, this is the same adjustments that you all see each and every year. We review our current budget and how we ended the year, so these are our 2018 year-end budget adjustments. These are required of our auditors. We cannot have any departments or funds that are in the red, so at year-end, we have to make bookkeeping-type entries, and I'm not authorized to do such. You all, as the governing body, have to vote on those adjustments. We also get adjustments from our school system. They make categorical transfers, which are a net zero effect. They're just moving monies from one category to the next. And they also get additional funds during the year that they only ask for appropriation at year-end, and so those requests are included in these year-end adjustments. They have no financial impact to you all, as in most cases, in all these cases, the monies have already been spent, and general fund monies are not included in these. They are usually other funds, like the school fund revenue, state restricted seizure accounts, veterinary fund, that kind of thing, and you just have to appropriate monies that already exist. And so, because of the sheer volume, it's 1,736,511, this will require a motion and a 10-day, motion seconded and a 10-day layover. So, this might be the first one that we've done since the new system has happened, so you won't record a vote tonight. You'll actually vote on these adjustments in August, so you'll have a chance to, if you have any questions, and I can certainly entertain those tonight, or we can wait till August.
Anyone have any questions tonight? Okay, thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appropriate a total of $1,736,511.5, and approve the suggested categorical changes to the school board for the FY 2018 county budget.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Davis. It is due for a 10-day layover, so we will have no vote. We're down to appointments, the reapportment of Dan River ASAP Policy Board. Just a question.
Yes, it has been brought to my attention that James McLaughlin currently serves on the Dan River ASAP Policy Board. His term is gonna expire on August the 19th, but he is eligible for another three-year term, which will begin on August the 20th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Mr. McLaughlin to the Dan River ASAP Policy Board for a three-year term starting August 20th, 2018.
Second. Got a motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Please record the vote. Cast your vote. Need one more vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Thank you. Ms. McLuster, we're down to 13B, reapportment of SAAA Board of Directors.
Yes, Anita White currently serves on the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors. Her term will expire on August the 22nd, 2018. She is eligible for another three-year term, which will begin on August the 23rd. County staff recommends the reapportment of Ms. White to the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term starting on August the 23rd, 2018.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Miller, Dr. Miller.
I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Mr. Adams, Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors.
Miss White, one of them, Miss White.
Miss White, yes.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're at 13C, reapportment of SAAA Board of Directors.
Yes, Mr. Philip Adams, his first full term on the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors expired on June 5th, 2018. He is eligible for reapportment for another three-year term, and county staff recommends the reapportment of Mr. Adams to the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term starting on July 18th, 2018.
Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we reappoint Mr. Adams, Philip Adams.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Thank you. Ms. McLuster, we're down to 13B, reapportment of SAAA Board of Directors.
Yes, Anita White currently serves on the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors. Her term will expire on August the 22nd, 2018. She is eligible for another three-year term, which will begin on August the 23rd. County staff recommends the reapportment of Ms. White to the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term starting on August the 23rd, 2018.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Miller, Dr. Miller.
I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Mr. Adams, Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors.
Miss White, one of them, Miss White.
Miss White, yes. To the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors.
Stop it.
Three-year term starting June 22nd.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Can you take that mover off?
I'm gonna cancel that, and we're gonna start it over, okay?
Okay. Dr. Miller's the mover.
Is it me, or is it getting hot in here? It's hot.
Okay, motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're at 13C, reapportment of SAAA Board of Directors.
Yes, Mr. Philip Adams, his first full term on the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors expired on June 5th, 2018. He is eligible for reapportment for another three-year term, and county staff recommends the reapportment of Mr. Adams to the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term starting on July 18th, 2018.
Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we reappoint Mr. Adams, Philip Adams.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to matters from work session, 14A, contract.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the real estate representation agreement between the county and Marcus and Millachap Real Estate Investment Services of North Carolina Incorporated, subject to any necessary legal changes as determined by the county attorney.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay. Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to 14B from work session that was removed from the consent agenda, EMS transport and EMS backup transport memorandum of agreement extension. And, who's gonna take?
I'll take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
As you're aware, we've had some EMS coverage interruptions recently in the county, and the short-term fix was to hire DRT to provide EMS transport coverage in the Hurt area, and then contracted Cool Ranch Branch Rescue Squad and Blair's Fire Department to provide additional EMS transport backup coverage in the county. We have bid this service out for a long-term. We have bid this service out for a long-term solution. We hope to award that next month. However, in the interim, we need to extend this, a short-term extension for another thirty-day period. The reason why this was pulled off the consent agenda is that the total cost for this is incorrectly stated in the packet. The correct total cost of this thirty-day extension is seventy-three, three thousand two hundred dollars. This money is already budgeted in FY nineteen budget. County staff recommends the board approve the extension of the memorandum of agreements with DRT for Hurt EMS transport coverage and backup EMS coverage with Cool Branch Rescue Squad and Blair's Fire Department for thirty-day period pursuant to the terms of the MOA for total cost of seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the thirty-day extensions.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, do I have a second?
We'll all finish it out. To the DRT, Cool Branch Rescue Squad, and Blair's Fire Department, MOAs for EMS transport coverage and EMS backup transport coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. A motion by Mr. Blackstock, do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Okay, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to board members' reports. I'll start with Dr. Miller this time. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, I want to bring up something from the agenda for next meeting, and I'm going back to the directors. And I'm not here to sort of, you know, this DSS documentation I've received, the first seventeen pages, not to mention thirty, twenty-nine pages through when it comes to foster care. We've got a lot of disparity, and a lot of things out of place, and I've got markings that it's far too long to read to even try to develop all the questions that I have. And I want to put that on the agenda for discussion in our next meeting on how we're gonna look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Blackstock.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock, and Mr. Farmer.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, and Mr. Barber.
Yes, sir, I just wanted everybody to keep the family of Ronald Williams in their prayers, who was a great member of our community, his daughter Stacy Maru, Judge Maru, and Mark. And I grew up with that family, with my dad running a service station. I've pumped a lot of gas, Mr. Williams, and he's stopped by every day on his way back from down, and I know he'll be sorely missed in the county, and he was a great person. Just remember the family.
Thank you. Mr. Skares.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Barber's comments. I have a short statement I want to make. I've served on the Social Services Board, which has directed administrative control over our local Department of Social Services for well over a year now. I thought that that organization was running smoothly until February of this year, when I began to receive specific allegations from numerous current and former employees, pretty much thirteen from each side. And I thought these allegations were significant enough to warrant an independent investigation. So far, every effort to initiate this independent investigation has been stonewalled by some members of the Social Services Board, and even by Mr. Fisk, the attorney of record for DSS. If you want to get a clear picture of what those allegations are, I would urge you to follow the social media accounts of Vic Ingram and Henry Hurt. Mr. Ingram and Mr. Hurt have detailed almost every allegation that was presented to me by interviewing and corroborating directly with the people that had the courage to come forward. I would also like to urge everyone to review the recent assessment that was performed by the commissioner of DSS. If you take the time to dig through the glowing report where only eighty percent of the employees responded to the commissioner's survey, you will find that twenty percent of those that responded felt there was low morale. Twenty-six percent did not feel valued. Thirty-five percent felt there was no support from coworkers or leadership, and forty percent felt there were no job advancement opportunities, and that positions were filled by a pre-selected process. Finally, only forty-four percent of those responded spoke favorably of our local department. Kind of makes you wonder what the twenty percent that did not participate in this survey could have said. More importantly, in this assessment, state-required benchmarks were not met in two critical areas, medical assistance and child protective services response time limits. I thought that the appointment of new members to the Social Services Board would have changed the dynamics of that board and allowed us to take a step in providing true oversight to that entity. Unfortunately, the same leadership that was unable or unwilling to move forward to investigate this situation in the previous board was reinstated last night, and I don't have the confidence in their leadership. I've tried to work within the constraints of this board since the beginning of this mess, and after last night's theatrics, where the husband of the director of DSS allegedly threatened and verbally assaulted a county resident, I've reached my wits' end. I'm hereby requesting that we schedule a closed session to discuss dissolving the current Social Services Board and moving management and oversight to a local government official in our next board meeting. I'd also like to schedule a public meeting afterwards where we vote on said resolution to make these changes. Now, as a Christian and as a U.S. Air Force veteran, where the core tenets of that organization, integrity, honor, and service before self were drilled into my being over a twenty-two-year career, I think I have an innate ability to recognize a corrupt situation when I see one. I have served in some of the most austere and hostile environments in this world while being shot at, mortared, and with the occasional rocket coming my way. And I don't say that to boast, but to tell you, I've served under fire, and my integrity or my ability to make sound decisions has never been called into question until now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skares. I too want to echo the comments from Mr. Barber concerning the Williams family. He was a real public servant, actually served as the mayor of the city for a few years, was very active within the community, and a real advocate for positive change within our region. He will be sorely missed, and as most of you know, one of his children is our current judge and does a great job for us here in the county, so please keep that family in your prayers. I also want to thank our law enforcement folks and our fire and rescue folks. It's really good to see our volunteers stepping up to extend that contract so we're getting service. One of my colleagues, Mr. Blackstock, said tonight that he hadn't had any complaints since we'd gone to this service with the new contractors, with DRT, and I personally haven't had any complaints or calls on this end that's being covered by volunteers on the backup side. So kudos to those folks, and I want to thank them. I want to thank the staff tonight, the IT staff. You did a great job. We got through everything. Looks like we're heading in the right direction. Kayla, great job. Did a great job. We appreciate it very much. I don't have anything else to say tonight. We're turning it over to Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Sides. Do you have any comments tonight?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you mentioned about the staff and the IT. I do feel like things went smoothly tonight. I think we're getting closer and closer to that ideal spot, so I appreciate that. Also, I want to just take the opportunity to thank the full board for your expressions of sympathy and condolences in the recent loss of my mother and the nice plant that I received from the board. So your thoughts are very much appreciated, and I thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. And, Mr. Hunt, do you have anything tonight?
No, sir.
That completes our agenda for tonight. I declare the meeting adjourned.